We'll open the May 1st, 2018 City Council meeting, the clerk will call the roll to record those who are present.
Anderson Burgos.
Here.
Bartley.
Here.
Bresnahan. Leahy.
Present.
LeBron Martinez.
Here.
Lisi. McGee.
Here.
McGivern.
Here.
Roman. Sullivan.
Here.
Tomlin.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentin.
Here.
Please stand for their Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
City of Hoyok.
And City Council.
And Puerto Rico right now.
Councilor Lisi is on the way, Councilor Roman is in Boston for a conference, so he will not make it tonight. However, he did say that on May 23rd at 7:00, he will have his Charter and Rules Committee meeting to take up certain items that have been held in there. With that, unless there's any motions, we'll go right down to items laid on the table, and just one point to note, I went to get my glasses and I forgot them. So Councilor Valentin said I didn't have any style, and she said, "Now I can borrow hers." Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Thank you, good evening. If I could indulge the City Council and take out of order a public service subcommittee item that we worked on last week, where it's the confirmation of one of Mayor Morris's appointments to Personnel Department.
So, 18A. This motion is to suspend the rules and go out of order to item 18A.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
All's opposed. Committee on Public Service whom was referred, Council review the mayor's appointment of Hector and Council Valentin's, help me with the saying again. Thank you, for Personnel Masterator for the City of Hoyok. All members have signed off on the jacket. With that, I'll turn it over to the Chair, Council Leahy.
Yes, sir, thank you so much. So, we had a meeting and Hector came in and he presented us with his resume, we had a copy previously. He attended University of Massachusetts Dartmouth, Bachelor's of Science in Leadership Management. He went from there and he worked for the state of Massachusetts for a short period of time, then went off and started working for Price Right. He started working for Price Right in 2013, and he worked his way up. In fact, I think he still works there. So, if anybody at home is watching the City Council meeting that works at Price Right, surprise. So, he had a lot of responsibilities where he was in charge of employee relations. He was also in charge of recruitment and separation. The questions I had asked Hector is, the City of Hoyok does a lot of wonderful things. One of the things that we need to get better at is when people do decide to either retire or to move on. Unlike the private sector, City of Hoyok doesn't do exit interviews. And I think that's data that we should have our hands on and we should understand, you know, what are the different reasons why people are leaving? Is it to go on to a different community? Is it for retirement? And he said that's something he'll plan to do in his office. One of the other things he was in charge of as well at Price Right was compliance. And anybody knows anything about business, compliance is a very important position, it's a very important role. And he was also in charge of compensation and benefits. So, he has the resume, he has the years of experience, he has the mayor's appointment. I'm gonna let, open the floor for other councilors to speak, but he gave a very good, very good interview, and I'm happy to have him on board. He is gonna move into the City of Hoyok.
Anyone else? Councilman McGivern?
I would just speak in favor of confirming Mr. Karskiel's appointment to the Personnel Department itself. Council Leahy did a good job of summarizing some of the good answers that he gave the committee and the energy that he showed the committee, I think is a plus in his favor. He understands it doesn't take one person to make a Human Resource Department work, it takes a number of people, and he has the insight to understand the importance of department heads, the importance of working with the City Council, the importance of working with the mayor, and I think he can make a fine addition to our staff. Jimmy's question was a unique question, I think a very appropriate question, and Hector did give a good answer. The only problem with doing exit interviews with the way teachers are leaving our city, you know, we would need a full-time position just to keep up with it.
Anyone else? With that, the motion on the floor from the committee is recommend that the appointee be confirmed. It was seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Congratulations, Hector.
Back to item, actually laid on the table, item one, from Irma Cruz, Assistant City Clerk, minutes of the special meeting from March 20th and April 3rd. Motion's removed from the table. Motion is removed from the table, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To receive and approve.
Motion is to receive and approve, everyone's had a chance to look over these.
Do we have the narratives?
Yep, they, I did speak with Ryan and the, with Irma. I guess the confusion is the narratives were part of the package, were part of a, what we call a separate document. So there, you just had to open it, and that's why they weren't seen if you received them by email. But they, we did look into it, they were part of everything that was sent. And then Ryan did follow up with forwarding the emails as to when he did send them back then, so he did confirm it. Motion is to receive and approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Item two, order that the Mayor, Chief of Staff, Representative UFCW 1459, discuss the resolution filed by, filed to deny the current approved contract. Any action on two, three, and four?
Mr. President? I know that the, for at least two and four, the maker of both of these orders, I think, is Councilor Ramon, if I remember correctly. I mean, he's not here tonight, so I'm not sure that I might wanna take action, this microphone is awful. But, but it seems that there was an agreement that was reached, so I don't know if it would be pertinent to give these leave to withdraw, but because the maker of the order is here, I'm not sure if that's what we should do.
We, we could do leave to withdraw, or we could leave them tabled until the next meeting.
That's fine.
So.
Motion to leave them tabled?
When you have to do a motion, you can just leave them tabled. Alright, so with that, there's no action on two, three, and four, we'll move on to public comment. Of which there are seven people. First one is Eric Tab from 69 Suffolk Street in Hoyok. Just make sure the microphone is on, tap it, there's a button underneath.
Hello?
So, with that, as we all know, pursuant to our rules, it allows up to 10 to speak, of which, it does usually say about a minute and a half, but we can open up to two minutes, or if you guys want to suspend the rules, 'cause there's only seven people with that. If there's no motion, we'll turn it over to you and we'll go from there.
Thank you, good evening. I wanna first thank everybody for always spending your time and your love to the City of Hoyok. I also, I came today because I saw that Mr. Bartley filed a motion to get more information about the parking lots, we recently spent $5.5 million to repair both of them. I wanted to see if we could at least suggest to the mayor or something. I saw that, I went this morning at 9:00 in the morning, there were 150 cars parked for free. I know that the bottom, the below parking lot is working, and so perhaps we can just close the top parking lot temporarily until they get fixed. If there's 150 cars parked, that's like $50 a car, that's $7,500 a month, I think we could be using the money, the city. So, just, that's my suggestion.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next is Helene Florio from 31 Wellesley Road.
Thank you, and again, I'm Helene Florio, 31 Wellesley Road. I'm here tonight, I wanna first start off by thanking Councilor David Bartley and the DGNR Committee for their very thoughtful and very thorough discussion last night in regards to the property at the Lynch School. And also to thank the three other counselors, the five counselors from DGNR, we're all here. Peter Tolman, Josie Valentin, Mike Sullivan, and Nelson Roman, along with David Bartley, and Joe McGivern, President Todd McGee, and Juan Anderson Burgos, the doorman. They were all here, all here last night, and it was a very, very thorough discussion. I'm here from Hoyok taxpayers to support their findings and to hope that tonight, when you get to it, that you do vote in favor of the coal vest proposal. It's a very good proposal for Hoyok, and particularly involved, particularly in relationship to the amount of money it's gonna cost them to take care of that property. I don't have to get into all of the detail, you've got it all. But, it was, it was a very good meeting, and I wanna thank you all for the due diligence that was put into it last evening, so thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ann Tallheimer from 8 Clark Street.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to address the body. I'm here to speak in support of item 42, which is Councilor Valentin's reintroduction of the anti-hate resolution. It is asking to adopt a resolution affirming the City of Hoyok's commitment to being a safe and accepting community. This is something that I believe Hoyok is. You've done this before, you've done similar actions previously, April 2016. This item was filed in November 2016 and left to wither in committee. I've addressed the City Council before about this item, and I'm honestly surprised that it hasn't come to a vote yet. It seems like an obvious resolution. I want a City Council that affirms, publicly affirms, that they are adamantly committed to protecting Hoyokers from racist, Islamophobic, anti-Semitic, misogynistic, homophobic, transphobic, anti-immigrant, and anti-refugee sentiments and acts, and all other targeting of residents based on their identities or their perceived identities. I want a City Council that openly, and publicly, and loudly proclaims that hate has no home here in Hoyok. Please vote in favor of this resolution, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Deb Aloesia of 147 Sycamore Street.
Hi, good evening. It's great to see Gladys LeBron, I saw her recently at the Chestnut Park cleanup. And I am thankful for Josie Valentin for bringing Carmen Yulen Cruz to Hoyok, because one of the things she said that was really inspiring to me is, "No one knows the soup better than the spoon that stirs the pot." And that is definitely true of the Chestnut Park Association of which I have attended. Some of the problems that seem to be coming up, and I have participated in their meetings, have to do with the structure in and around the school. If you know anything about the Lawrence School, there is an abandoned building or very close by, right across from the library next to the Masonic Temple, which has a potential for violent crime if it hasn't happened already. Very close to the parking lot, there is a vacant lot that has a lot of activity, loads of cleanups, bags and bags and bags of trash. There is also a package store right around the corner, and these are mothers that have limited income and are very concerned about their children. They are a vulnerable population that does not need to be made more vulnerable. The overall cost to these children and their futures is what I'm thinking of as far as future problems. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Wendy Urban, 186 Pine Street.
Hello. I just wanna say, thank you for remembering my name. I was here a couple weeks ago, and I spoke in regards to item that was on for requesting residential parking on Pine Street. And unfortunately, I missed the April meeting that this came up for, because last week, I didn't have a Tuesday in my week. I have no idea what happened to Tuesday, but it didn't exist. So, what I wanna ask is that it does not get withdrawn and that we can actually hear it. I actually sent in a proposal to the City Council members in regards to trying to make it permit parking instead. I agree that restricting it to residential only might, will definitely not work, but I actually made a very good proposal, and I have a copy if anybody needs it tonight, in regards to permit parking. I know that permit parking is something that we have in Hoyok. And that being said, with more and more, I know that we talked, you guys talked last week about beautification of the apartment blocks in Hoyok, and I absolutely totally agree with the architecture in Hoyok, there's none like it. And if we're going to continue to try to build those buildings back up, we're gonna have more and more problems with people requesting residential only parking. And I know that you had that on Ivy Street. But I think people who own houses in Hoyok are gonna want to have some sort of right, that us that can't afford driveways right now, are gonna wanna have some sort of right to be able to have the privilege of parking in front of our properties. And that being said, all we're asking is for paid privilege to do that. And my permit parking plan actually lays that out. So if you haven't read that in the email, I have a copy of that if you needed, if not, I'd be happy to resend that. But I just wanted to ask that that not be withdrawn, and that we could actually revisit that and probably maybe kinda think about doing something like that. And if not only my neighborhood, but if that comes up in the future, that might be something that you guys can consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Susan Miller of 190 Pine Street.
Good evening, everyone. I live next door to Wendy, I pretty much have the same thoughts as she does. I'm here to just echo her thoughts and back her on this. My only issue here is that I would really like to be able to park in front of my house. I'm a little bit older, and I'm challenged with that, if I have to carry bags of groceries down the street or up the street, and I understand in the wintertime that it's going to be impossible, that I'm just gonna have to arrange my schedule to do the best I can. But, in the summertime, when that parking place should be available to me, that's what I would like to do. I'd like to park, I've lived in that house for 30 years, I've paid taxes. I've paid taxes on my home for thirty years. I have no intentions of leaving Hoyoke. So all I'm asking is, can I just please have a place to park in front of my house? Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, there's no one else for public comment? Thank you for everyone who spoke. Item five. Communications from Irma Cruz, Assistant City Clerk, minutes of the April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting.
Motion received and approved.
Motion is to receive and approve. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item six from Bellamy Schmidt, Acting City Auditor, letter regarding fund deficit.
Motion to receive and refer to finance.
Motion is to receive and send to finance. Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item seven, also from the Acting Auditor, regarding, a letter regarding the grants.
If we could take up seven and eight and receive and send to finance?
Motion is to take seven and eight, suspend the rules, take them up as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Refer to, receive and refer to finance.
As copies, Mr. President?
As copies.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item nine is from, a letter from Chief Nieswanger with his intentions to retire on July twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. Motion is to receive.
Second.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Suspend the necessary rules and take up ten through fourteen as a package? Were you going to say something else, President?
No, I would just want... Okay, so. Motion is to suspend rules, take up ten through fourteen as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? These are all renewals. Number ten is for Sullivan Company. Also eleven for junk dealer's license. Twelve is a secondhand license for the jewelry store at North Hampton Street, two-two-two-five North Hampton Street. Thirteen is a secondhand license for sixty-eight Cherry Street. And then fourteen is a renewal for the home occupation for a computer consulting.
Motion to receive and grant the renewals pending all municipal fees and taxes are paid.
Well, it's just a grant, let's see, make sure. All taxes and everything has been signed off. So on the motion is to grant the renewals for ten through fourteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? President's report. Counselor, or former, I always say counselor, what's counsel, I always say counselor. Former Counselor Desta Lopez was in, he gave T-shirts for the June tenth parade for those who already purchased them. Just a reminder, there are T-shirts that they are making for the walk in New York. Counselor Leahy's showing that. So he is getting those orders and bringing them in as fast as possible. So if you want a T-shirt in order to march, contact him. If you don't have it, I can always send you the email. We did recognize Elaine, former Mayor Elaine Pluta, with the naming of the walkway, or Canal Walk, in her name. Last, I do believe last Sunday it was. So I just want to recognize former mayor for all of her work at the city of Hoyoke, both as a counselor and then as a mayor, and thank her for everything. And it was, it was a very nice ceremony. One of the funny parts of the ceremony is Kevin Jordane was getting a ladder to try and get the bag off, and he may have slipped and almost took out the fence. So, but he's okay, he's fine. But it was a very nice ceremony, it was actually a very nice day, day for her. I know Counselor Valentin, we had the mayor of San Juan in. Would you like to talk about that or give an update?
Well, first of all, thank you to the folks that showed up to one or more of the events that we did. She was with us here in Hoyoke from Wednesday to Saturday morning, in one way or another. Again, for the record, because this has been asked over and over again, because, you know, folks, when they don't know the answer to things, they make it up. So just to be very clear, the expenses for the mayor's trip were fully covered by Mount Hoyoke College, and they were generous enough to share her with us. So, that, I was asked that question probably twenty times with a negative tone of, well, who paid for that? So just for the record, Mount Hoyoke College is our friend. And so we had a great event at Gateway City Arts Wednesday night. Had about three hundred people there, I was told was the count. Earlier in the day, Wednesday, I was able to bring her to Girls Inc. and the Care Center. She met with groups of about fifty folks in each of those, that was phenomenal. And then Thursday, she had her, you know, main event, which was at the Chapin Auditorium at Mount Hoyoke, and that had a thousand one hundred people at it. And three hundred of those were community folks, based on tickets that they shared with us. So it was very well attended. And then Friday, we gave her a key to the city, which was the first time that, at least under this administration, this has been done. And it was a beautiful event. It was raining, so it got moved inside and actually ended up working really well. And we had about forty students from Kelly School that actually walked here with their teacher to be a part of the event. And they sat right in the front and she spoke to them for most of the time. It was really beautiful to watch, so. Folks were very, very happy with, with her visit. And when she was packing her suitcases on Thursday, on Friday night, she said she was sad to leave. She feels that Hoyoke is a very special place and, and was really just impressed with our, with, you know, with our community and with the love that we have for one another here and the support for the Puerto Rican community that she very much sends. She was able to meet several of the evacuees, and so that was really important for her. And she continues to be an advocate for the island every day. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. And also since the last time we met, I'd like to congratulate Counselor Valentin. She won the Democrat of the Year in the city of Hoyoke, so congratulations on that.
Congratulations.
And also, I spoke on behalf of Comcast, and Comcast Cares Day, where I was trying to encourage people to go. I went, I had to go. And they had about, over a hundred and fifty hard, they had a hundred and forty-nine hard workers, then they had me. And they had some good coffee, though. Not only did they beautify the place and spend a lot of money on the place, they also left a check for five thousand dollars to Jericho. And so I just want to say, you know, props to them. That's all that I have, thank you.
Counselor Sullivan? Did you have something?
Yep, thank you. Yes, the Hoyoke Community Preservation Committee had a public workshop on the eighteenth at the Senior Center. And the CPA programs moving forward, they've now come out with a itinerary. We're looking at July first through thirtieth of this year for an introduction meeting for the first round of CPA funding. August will be the applicants to submit eligibility determination forms. And it moves right through September. CPC responds to the eligibility. October, applicants submit funding applications. And then January, gather public input. February, the applicants present their projects. And then by March thirtieth, the CPC will submit their recommendations to the city council. And by June first of next year, we'll be doing the first award letters and grant agreements executed. So it's, it's moving forward nicely. The only thing I'd like to get out to the public and to enlist the support of the entire council is to reach out to your constituents. The meeting was very sparsely attended, I think there was only maybe fifty people there. It's, even though not everybody was in favor of this program, it is going forward. The monies are going to be available, and we should take advantage of it. There's a survey out online. The, the website for the CPA is up and running on the, on the city website. The survey is there, and it would be good to get more people responding to the survey. So for the people that are in the public here that are listening on TV, and to all the counselors here, if you can reach out to as many people possible, there's only seven days left before the survey closes. And as far as the responses on the survey so far, that has been fairly sparse also.
Counselor Lacy?
Thank you. One last announcement. This Sunday is the second annual River Rollin' Stroll, where they close down, MassDOT closes down the one sixteen bridge, and the cities of South Hadley and Hoyoke come together to meet in the middle, so to speak. And I know that there's a number of counselors here, as well as the mayor, that have signed up to be a part of that campaign with the counselors and city manager of, or town manager of South Hadley. And it was a really great inaugural event last year, even with bad weather. There was a ton of people out. It's pedestrian only. I'll be out there with Lucian on his, we can't decide right now if it's going to be the bike with the training wheels or the scooter. But we're looking forward to rolling over that bridge. And it was such a great event last year that I'm really looking forward to it. Food trucks, music, I hope to see you guys out there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other announcements. Counselor Vagan and I will be meeting with the mayor tomorrow around six to discuss the salary study. He sent an email last night, I will send it to everybody with regards to the salary study and certain things he's looking to do with that. Charter and rules, as I mentioned, for those who came in late. Counsel Roman couldn't make it tonight, he's in Boston for a conference, but he'll have a charter and rules committee meeting, May twenty-third. That one will be at seven o'clock, normally at six thirty, but someone will be at seven. And Counselor Leahy stole my thunder, but I want to recognize Democrat, the Hoyoke Democrat of the Year. They had a, an event for Counsel Valentin at Jay's Bed and Breakfast. It was very nice. I walked in with my son right after baseball practice. Congratulations, well deserved. And once again, Counselor Leahy, I swear, I'm just kidding. With that, we will move on.
Mr. President, could we suspend the rules and take item forty-two, please?
Second. Motion is to suspend the rules and take up item forty-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And you could do an abbreviated reading, because everyone's seen this.
Order from Counsel Valentin. This is that the city council adopt a resolution affirming the city of Hoyoke's commitment to being a safe and accepting community. That a copy of the resolution be provided to Senator Humison, State Representative Vega, and Governor Baker. Proposed resolution wording is included. It's about two pages.
Motion is to receive and adopt.
Motion is to receive and adopt. Is there a second?
Seconded.
It's seconded. Under discussion, Counsel Valentin.
Very quickly, I originally filed this in November twenty sixteen, shortly after the change in administration of our nation, based on feedback from many folks here in Hoyoke, not just my constituents, but folks throughout the city. And we, at that time, sent it to DGR. And, so that was November twenty sixteen, it was sent to DGR. From DGR, it was scheduled to come to full council April twenty seventeen, which was a year ago. But there were not sufficient signatures on the committee report to bring it in front of the full body. At that point, made the request on the, on the floor to see if folks that were here wanted to sign the committee report so that we could bring it up here, a year ago. And that request was not something that was of interest. So it's been sitting in committee for a year. And it was just a couple meetings ago that Counselor Roman actually did the same thing, where something had been in committee for a very long time, and he refiled them and they got sent back to committee. This time, I'm asking that we receive and adopt tonight, as I would have liked us to do back in twenty sixteen or even twenty seventeen, based on numerous conversations and discussions we've had here on why this would be an important message to send to our city. I love the message that Ann said about how there is no place for hate in Hoyoke. I like that phrase, there were a lot of H's in there, and it kind of flowed when she said it. I just paraphrased it. But that is why my motion tonight is to receive and adopt, because it's been sitting in committee for a year. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Anderson Burgos?
So back in twenty fifteen, when I decided to run, I was walking around my ward and I was knocking on doors. And listen, I, I guess sometimes I feel like I live in a bubble. And back in twenty fifteen, not only was I, you know, attacked, and, and they said, you know, racial slurs, but homophobic one as well. And I just don't understand why this has been in limbo for so long. I just, I don't get it, it's to protect. It's simple. And I don't, I just don't understand why it hasn't been passed. That's all.
Anyone else? Counselor Lacy?
I'd just like to speak in support. I think that, as with any resolution, it's symbolic in nature. And I think that the symbolism here is that, just as the title says, we're a safe and accepting community. I believe we are a safe and accepting community. And I also know that there have been incidents of hate crime and discrimination in the city. Right after this order was filed, right before, sorry, right before this order was filed, there was the antisemitism graffiti, antisemitic graffiti on the face of Mount Tom. Like if that's not something that is symbolic of Hoyoke, I don't know what is, in terms of Mount Tom. So I really think that it's way past due. I think that we should affirm our commitment to keeping the city a safe and, and accepting community. We all play a role in that. So I'd like to see us pass it tonight.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yep, thank you. On May fifth of twenty sixteen, we passed a resolution, adopted a resolution and passed it, affirming the city of Hoyoke's commitment to civil rights and ensuring equity for all people. All people. I think, for me, that covers everything. Whether you're homophobic, Nazi, anything, you go right down the list. All people. We don't need a new resolution with seven therefor's and five whereas's when we've already done this. And now to reintroduce another one, six months after we put this through. Okay? And I, I won't go through all the whereas's in the one we've already passed, but it concludes now therefore be it resolved that the Hoyoke City Council hereby affirms the city of Hoyoke's commitment to civil rights and ensuring equity for all people in Hoyoke and beyond. This was a beautiful resolution. We passed this two years ago. I, I don't understand why we have to go do it again and do it again and do it again. This kind of response to people that put swastikas on the mountain and do other things, we're reacting to what they do, and this kind of stuff only encourages them. This is the kind of reaction they want. All right? It's, it's what they're trying to evoke from people. All right? To me, the best thing is just to ignore them as the worthless garbage that they are.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. So last time that we had this in front of us, one of the things that I asked to be included, since it was stratified, it was adding different groups of people. So I asked for public servants to be involved, specifically police officers. Because I can't think of a group in the city of Hoyoke that gets, for lack of better words, hated on every single day. You know, the police go out and protect and serve us, our families, our constituents. And every day, they get a world of hate in their face. You have to be strong men and women to handle that position. And at that time, it wasn't allowed. So I voted for it to get sent to committee. That's the reason I did. I also think that something that should be in there is computers. You know, people talk a good game and how we shouldn't have this hate in the city of Hoyoke. But then they go on to beautiful community forums such as Hello Hoyoke, please stop by. And they sit there and they hate on each other. Enough where I had to get two other admins, Josh Garcia and Faith Glanville, admins, Josh Garcia and Faith Glanville, who do a wonderful job. But every day, the three of us are deleting sometimes up to fifty items. And it's really just nonsense. And other people are in different forums and they're just criticizing one another. And when this was brought up last time, the fact that I voted to table it, I was getting hated on through the computers. So it was interesting because I wanted people to read this and say, wait a second, I shouldn't be hating this person, but yet, computers isn't in there. The internet's not in there. Public service and public servants aren't in there. It should be. Nelson Mandela said, no one is born hating. No one is born hating because of the color of skin or the religion. They have to learn. They have to learn it. If they can learn to hate, they can learn to love. Thank you.
Anyone else? If there's no other comment, the motion that was seconded was to receive and adopt.
Can I make an amendment?
Mr. President?
Counsel Leahy.
Can I make an amendment to add public servants?
Motion by Counsel Leahy is to add public servants. Is there a second?
Seconded.
It was seconded. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Roll call.
Only one roll call. I'd say the ayes have it because I only heard one nay. Some motion. That's two.
Show of hands.
On what?
On the amendment.
So you don't want public service to be in there?
But, hold on, you can't go back and forth. The motion was to amend and add public servants. It was seconded, there was a call. Voice seemed to be for yes, there was one no that I heard. There's now a call for show of hands.
Under discussion? Is that possible at this point in the series of events that we laid out here?
Well, first we got to see, are we going to look for a show of hands or a roll call? I heard one roll call.
I see a roll call and Counsel Brezner had seconded.
That's two, you need three for a roll call. That fails. Show of hands?
On the amendment, right?
On the amendment.
In favor of the amendment?
In favor of the amendment. So if you're all in favor of the amendment, raise your hand to add public servants. One, two, three, four.
So I'd like to, I mean, this is why I wanted to talk about it before I had the vote.
Under discussion, Counsel Leacy.
Thank you. So...
Mr. President, I had my hand up before. I had my hand up earlier, so.
Hold on, Counsel, it was Counsel Leahy, he made amendment before we could get there. She's talking about the amendment, so we'll go to Counsel Leacy, then we'll go to you.
Thank you. Really simply, the seven identities that are identified in the resolution are people's identities, not occupations. So I do see there to be a significant and substantial difference between someone who is Jewish, someone who is Muslim, someone who is identified as transgender, and someone who decides to go into public office. I mean, this is why these different groups are called out here. They are born the way that they are. And they are marginalized because of those identities. And I'm just going to say that there is a substantive difference between being born a particular identity and then taking on the roles that we do in our daily lives.
Counsel Valentin and Counsel Bartley.
Thank you. Exactly echoing what Counsel Leacy is saying and also that these categories that are included in the resolution are what are known as protected groups. Folks are protected based on race, gender, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender expression, et cetera, et cetera. A career choice is not under that. So based on that is why I am not in favor of the amendment, with all due respect to Counsel Leahy. And again, it's not for this vote to be interpreted as so-and-so are not supportive of public servants or officers or, you know, your pick, but the fact that this, it's apples and oranges. And so I just wanted to say that before explaining why I'm voting against the amendment. Thank you.
Counsel Bartley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just want to go on record that I want Holyoke to be a safe and accepting community. So if we ended it right here, before we got to the whereas's and the resolutions, I think I'd be okay. In fact, I filed a similar order, I don't know, a year ago, and we put that in committee as well. This is why, Mr. President, we, you know, those of us that chair committees are hopeful that we can have debates and amendments in the committee as opposed to putting it out here. So my friend earlier said, why are we doing this? You know, we already had a motion, a resolution for civil rights. Well, I would say to my friend through the chair, it's about politics. This is simply a political statement made by one city counselor. I offered, Mr. President, when we had this in committee, I tried to make amendments. I was not allowed to make any amendments. I didn't, I couldn't get, I couldn't get a, I couldn't get a majority of my, of the DGR committee to allow me to make an amendment. It was a two-to-two tie. So we put it up to full city council, and this is maybe some history for you, we put it up to full city council and I didn't support it, I didn't sign the jacket, and there weren't enough members of the committee. The two members of that committee wouldn't allow me to make an amendment, they both signed the jacket. The other three of us did not sign the jacket, consequently went back to committee, and I admit I have not taken it up since then. There's no rule that says I need to take it up again, Mr. President. And I felt like with the activity of the committee that we had, you know, many other matters that were, that took precedent. I have not heard from the maker of the order directly, and even indirectly, to asking me to take it up again until I saw this on my agenda. So I had no, the maker of the order never once contacted me, Counsel, would you take this up again? That statement was never, that question was never asked of me between the one year from last year to this year. So that's a little bit of background. As I said to you earlier, Mr. President, I believe, I'm very warm to having this go to committee, not the committee that I, that I'm lucky enough to chair through your grace. I would like to go, I would like it to go to another committee where we can have a discussion, perhaps offer amendments that might work. I mean, I could make a motion right now, Mr. President, I'm positive I'd get a second, that I would ask the law department to advise us whether these groups are in fact legally protected groups. I don't know that to be true. Does the law department, can the law department confirm for me now that these are legally protected groups, Mr. President? I mean, that's a tough question to ask on the spot here in the middle of city council. So let me just reiterate. I mean, Holyoke should be a hate-free place. Holyoke should be a safe and accepted community. I think we welcome, without exception, people coming up to the microphone here. Every member of this body listens to people coming to the microphone with respect and attention. I mean, not one of us, in my six-plus years here, has ever been anything but a kind and open group. So I appreciate your patience, Mr. President. I like to make, I don't have a committee which to send this, so I feel a little, I mean, I'll leave it for discussion. Mr. President, it's my opinion that if one of the chairs, you know, I would say public safety probably would be my preference, but if one of the other chairs want to take it up in committee, I will attend that committee hearing, I will try to offer amendments, and we can have a discussion in the committee so that we can move our business tonight at full city council along. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyway, Counsel Brezner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have, I have a couple thoughts. You know, there's an article that came out in Newsweek that says, "The persecution," this is January 4th, 2018, "The persecution and genocides of Christians across the world is worse today than at any time in history." Now, people aren't born Jewish, so to speak. It's a faith that you accept, right? You know, I was born a Catholic and a Christian. So my question is, and it was when this first came up, is that, you know, if you're going to put antisemitic, anti-Christian should be in there as well, because again, Christians are being slaughtered. Try being a Catholic in Egypt or Syria. Guess what? It doesn't happen. Or North Korea, as a matter of fact. Look at, look at other, and the only reason I say that is because the name, the phrase "world" was brought in, okay? Some other thoughts, you know, we had a colleague of ours that was harassed. That was hate, but some of the folks that are proponents of this order really didn't have much to say when that was going on. You know, not, you have to realize that to include everyone, you can't believe that everyone is going to believe what you believe in. That's diversity. Accepting everyone's faith, everyone's belief, everyone's lifestyle, that is diversity. Not handpicking certain religions, certain lifestyles, because it's politically correct in today's day and age because Donald Trump became the president. The order that my colleague to my right pointed out, it is right on point. The city council adopt the resolution affirming the city of Hoyoke's commitment to being a safe and accepting community. Bang. Period. End of story. We don't have to go on for, you know, two more pages about certain religions and certain lifestyles because it's not inclusive. There's nothing about people that are born with a disability, nothing about people that are born with autism. Some people in this world believe that people aren't born a lifestyle, they become that lifestyle. And I have no opinion on that, but that, let's get that out there. Let's talk about that. I mean, I just don't think that, you know, the first, the order that we accepted in the first paragraph of Josie's order is right on point. We don't have to get into this whole, you know, antisemitic, well, anti-Christian. Where is that in here? Ageism. You don't think old people are, you know, discriminated against? I mean, it just, it's not, it's inclusive to some people because some people believe in what you believe in. Well, guess what? It's not inclusive to everybody. Another point that I brought up last time as well, everyone has the right to life. There's people that believe the right to life begins at the moment of conception, not the moment that a baby breathes air. So what, let's, I mean, you really want to hash this out? Let's hash this out. Let's be inclusive of everybody. The born, the unborn, the Christians, the Jews, the, everything. That's inclusive. So when you say something simply as, it's safe, we don't approve of hatred, we accept everybody, that means I accept everybody that's heterosexual, homosexual, and Jewish, Christian, Catholic, whatever you want to be, I'm okay with. But when you start handpicking certain things, that's what I'm against. Thank you.
Counsel Vacan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to say something along the lines of what Counsel Brezner said, but he said it so well, I don't think that I can improve upon it. And for me, when I was reading the whereas that says the Hoyoke City Council believes in the right of all people to lead lives of peace, dignity, free from fear, harassment, and violence, all people, each one of us, every one of us. But when we start pitting one group against another by making one group more special in any way, and I'm not going to pick out any on the list, because we could all make our own list, as soon as you start doing that, you're walking away from the American dream, which is that everybody can live in this country and have the benefits of these rights. And once we start taking that apart piece by piece and picking out certain groups that can have this and certain groups that then can't, because if one group gets something at the expense of another, then that other group has then lost something, I think we're missing the bigger point of what our country is all about. And so as long as we stick with the everybody, all for one, one for all, I'm in favor of this language. As soon as it starts to divide us, then I can't support it. Thank you.
Counsel Anderson Burgis.
So I just want to make one thing very clear and that everybody here and everybody watching understands that being gay is not a lifestyle, it's not something you pick up at a department store and that you wear. It is my identity. And when I walk around this city or the world, wherever I go in the world, I should be accepted. What Josie Valentin wants to see pass is not just my rights, but everybody's rights, okay? Whether it's an officer, a child. I don't, I would just love that you, everyone in this room, gone through what I'd gone through as a child, just for one minute, think of what it was to be one, growing up in Holyoke as a child. And everything, the strength that got me here. It was so hard. So if I see Counsel Valentin wanting to pass something that would protect my granddaughter, then I would like to see it passed too. And if, obviously, it doesn't affect you, right? Because I don't know what's the big deal. Why you guys don't see how simple this is, but yet you make it harder? I don't think you get it. Because you don't live in my skin. It probably hasn't happened to you because you're safe. Walk out of that bubble for a minute, walk in my shoes, and then you'll see what we're talking about, but yet you want to fight that. I don't get it.
Anyone else? Counsel McGivern.
On the amendment, the public servant, I find that to be very important. And what I immediately thought of is our policemen, our firemen, and now our teachers are subject to hate crimes, and they are second-class citizens in the city that they should not be. And if they should not be included in a message like this, then I don't understand their identity because their identity is what we are and what we want in this city. As far as adopting the resolution, I have no problem. I have no problem standing up for the identities, for the classes, for who's been singled out in here, but I think Mike Sullivan's message, but I think more important the message is that we need to adopt a unanimous resolution saying we are a good city and we're against hate. I think we're in this, Danny. The anti-immigrant, because you and I know, and a few other people in this room know, we are descendants of Irish immigrants. There is no other immigrant in the United States of America that have seen what the Irish saw in the mid-1800s in Ireland. And those that came over here were welcomed, and all immigrants should be welcomed and should be given a chance. The Irish immigrant across the street saw the sign, Irish need not apply. That's hate. The Irish immigrant didn't, you know, attack the store, they took over City Hall, and they said, let's change this. And if that's what we're doing, that's fine, let's send the message. But let's send a positive message, not one of, that we're, we can't agree to. Let's send one that's universal, that we are a good city and we are a city that doesn't hate.
Counsel Leacy and then Counsel Leahy.
My comments are very simple because at the end of that one, two, three, third, whereas, it says, you know, we're adamantly committed to protecting all these, and it singles out a handful of identities, but then it says, and all other, and all other targeting of residents based on their identities or perceived identities. So it really does have that blanket statement in there to cover everyone and whatever identities they hold for themselves.
Counsel Leahy.
Yeah, I kind of find that offensive and insulting. As a son of an immigrant, my father came over here back in 1965. He's not, he should not be listed in the catch basin. He should not be listed as one sentence that covers everybody. If other people are listed, why can't I have the right to have my father in immigration listed? Why couldn't Howie Granny have age discrimination listed? You know, this is like picking and choosing, but yet, we're not allowed to pick or choose. We're just presented with something, and luckily, my amendment to add public servants passed ten to two. But I also believe that we should also put immigration in there, age discrimination. You know, my father came over here.
Immigration is in there.
I'm sorry?
Immigration is in there. That's what Joe was speaking to just before.
Okay. Well, the thing is, age discrimination, it's not in there. Women over the age of forty is a protected class. Pregnancy is a protected class. There's a lot of things that are missing in this. Thank you.
Counsel Valentin.
Thank you. Just so you all know, when I filed this in November 2016, I didn't just kind of pull this out of a hat. I reached out to our fellow city counselors in North Hampton because they had already been working on something like this. And they were phenomenal in sharing the wording with us and explaining the... the process of how this all came through. Uh, and in their first meeting, it was adopted unanimously. And here we are, for the second time, I'm trying this. And I hear more the why this shouldn't happen than why this should happen. And I said it last year and I'll say it again. You can all vote however you want, but think about, if you're, if you're going to vote against it, think about what message that sends versus voting for it. Because we have resolutions in front of us here all the time that we don't agree 100% with the wording, but we know that resolutions are symbolic, that there is no legal ramifications. Again, it's a message to our community. So if you want to spend the time figuring out all the reasons this doesn't work for you, that's fine, you have the right to do that, vote against it. Again, my motion is that we receive and adopt, that we take the vote tonight and that we make that as a roll call and have it at that. That's my request. Thank you.
Counselor Bresnahan.
All I'm saying, folks, is that as much as you want to think it's inclusive, it's not that simple. So I could, I, you know, how fair is that? This is not, this is not, this is not celebrating diversity, this is not inclusiveness, it's not. You've picked the classes and, and the folks that you associate with or something, I don't know where, I know, I know Northampton came up with this order because I saw it when it passed. It's basically paraphrased from them. But again, this isn't Northampton. There's a lot of Irish Catholics in this town. I'm, I'm sure you're aware of that. And there's a lot of Christians in this town. But there's nothing about Christians, and Christians are being slaughtered, slaughtered. But we don't want to include them. Right? That's, that's what we don't want to do? So how, how inclusive is this order? We passed an order that says, "All people of all, of all, of all aspects and walks of life, we are with." But, you know, again, I'm not going to vote for it because it's not inclusive. As much as everyone thinks it's inclusive, it's not.
Uh, motion is refer to Public Safety Committee.
No. The motion currently was the amendment that was passed. So now there's a motion to, sent to where?
Public Safety.
Public Safety.
Second.
It was seconded. I'll just say one comment. Um, I signed on to this order when Counselor Valentine first proposed it.
Yep.
Because I didn't see it in the faction of only singling out people. I read the first sentence, which everyone has correctly put. "The city council adopted a resolution affirming the City of Hoyok's commitment to be in a safe and accepting community." Period. Doesn't, that's as clear as day. And then you get the whereas, it's because they're, you know, with anything, we're just trying to say stuff as to how we feel. You can go throughout this thing, whereas, "The City of Hoyok believes in the rights of all people." You'll see all people throughout here. And then in one whereas, as we all know, we try and point out certain things that mean to us. So to Counselor Valentine, to those in Northampton, this section that we're all caught up on kind of talked about certain groups. Could you elaborate more on every other group? You could, but to certain people, that's, that's what they wanted to get heard. They didn't say just this group. They've said throughout this entire document, "All, all, all, all." It's, it's littered throughout here. We can get caught up on this. As I said the last time, we can take up both resolutions out of committee, pass them, and then we can move on. Or to me, let's just pass this. Look, the message we're sending to the entire city is to everybody, we're an accepting community. There is one part in here that, yep, that, that's what they want to focus on because it means something to them. Don't take that away from them. If you want to add, you want to file another resolution tomorrow and put in the rest of the people that you believe, then do that. But as, when I took over this, took over up here and asked for your vote to give me a chance, one thing I did say is, things are not going to die in committee. I told you on the phone, we're going to take things up, there's going to be polite discussion and debate on it, and then we're going to move on. Because we have a lot of stuff to do. So let's do that, let's vote on this, stop sending to committee where it's just going to go back and forth.
On the order?
We've thought of this enough. Counselor Bacon?
Mr. President, with all due respect, I think there are people in this room that would have a list that they would feel exactly as strongly about as the people in the room who made the list, who are not open to modifications to it. And so if I accept your point of view on the matter, but I very strongly disagree and I will not support this list, I would support a resolution that eliminates the list, since there is no willingness whatsoever to amend the list. And as a conservative woman, I think I can very safely speak to what it feels like to be a minority in this city. Dare I put a drunk sticker on my car?
There's no one else? The motion was to send to public service or safety?
Safety.
It was seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Who knows, have it? Is there another motion? We'll go back. This was amended to add, uh, public service?
Servants.
Servants, sorry. Thank you for the correction. Public servants, that was added.
You can't put my subcommittee down. I don't want anybody hating us either.
What?
I said you can, feel free to put our pub- uh, public service on there too. Subcommittee.
Excuse?
Counselor Lebron Martinez?
You sort of mentioned just recently, why if someone is interested in something to add on, to go ahead and do a different resolution, submit the resolution, and let's vote on this one tonight. I think, you know, um, I, I'm sort of like struggling a lot on this issue. Right now, I'm dealing with a young person I, within my placement in the community due to the fact that it's someone who's a transgender and has been bullied so often that he is afraid of being placed where, you know, this can, um, trigger his emotions and a very bright individual in that it's, it's really heartfelt at this moment where I'm listening to what's going on in here. And, um, I always, to separate emotions and to separate situations and help me kind of figure out, I always take myself in a position where if, um, you've ever been in a position where you've been oppressed, uh, putting yourself in that individual's shoes and figuring out, figuring out what you would wish for that individual, right? As a space for safety. And, um, this is making me really say that we should go ahead, those who feel comfortable, vote on it, but let's make it public, who voted on it. And then if you're deciding to go into the public part, which is her order, not mine's, but I want this to be seen publicly because I think it's the best way to demonstrate our transparency when we think about what we say here, you know, those who talk the walk and those who do the walk as well. Thank you.
With that, so with the, um, resolution, with the amendment, motion is to receive and adopt the resolution. And that was yours and was seconded?
Correct.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Roll call?
Roll call, roll call.
Wait, can we get a ruling from the chair? It was, was, who has it? Is or nays?
The ayes had it.
Well, all right then.
I would like a roll call for the public, for the record, nothing out of the ordinary. Could I have colleagues please support my roll call?
Second.
Yes, second.
Thank you.
There are three for a roll call. With that, the order requires, or the rules require that roll call occur. The clerk will call the roll. Understand this, we did pull the name from the cup. Anderson Burgos will go first, Counselor Anderson Burgos will go first. That's the name.
You gotta destroy that ballot. It's like three meetings in a row.
I.
I think they all say the same.
Anybody shake them up?
So with that, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for a resolution with the amendment. If you vote no, you're voting against it.
Anderson Burgos?
100% yes.
Bartley?
No.
Bresnahan?
No.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Valentin?
Yes.
Eight yeas. Four nays.
With your vote, you approved it.
Thank you.
Back to...
Mr. President, before we, uh, move on to next item, what I forgot to bring up underneath of your presence report is tonight, um, the Forty Under Forty came out for Business West, and I know we have a bunch of alumni sitting in this room, but we also have two people from the City of Hoyok that won it. One is Saul Caban, who, um, actually works with Gladys. Um, beautiful picture of Gladys and Saul in the Business West. And also Haley Fair Dunn won it as well. So I just wanted to congratulate those two from Hoyok.
Congratulations. All right, so next is reports of committees, of which we're on to ordinance. Fifteen A. Committee on Ordinance was referred in order that a 15-minute parking spot be established in front of 733 High Street, or that it be adopted.
Uh, motion to, uh, receive and pass the first reading?
Second.
Motion is to receive and pass the first reading under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, we, we had a good discussion. Uh, just, Mr. President, just for clarification, uh, the, the chair lady, um, Linda wasn't available, so, um, I just, I, I serve the chair, uh, because I'm the vice chair of the committee.
Thank you.
And so I, I appreciate the, uh, patience. Just give me the patience to go through this. So there was a good discussion in committee. The DPW superintendent, um, put together, oh, once again, a very thorough report, and he put it into, uh, proper legal language. This is in front of Virgilio Property Management, 733 High, and it had unanimous support.
So motion is to pass, unless there's any other discussion? Motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The order be ordained and to put into legal language?
Motion is that the passage be ordained. With that, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the 15-minute-only parking spot in front of 733 High Street. If you vote no, you're voting against it.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approved it. Uh, fifteen B. Committee on Ordinance was referred in order that the city council, uh, street vendor license application, uh, for a mobile food truck at 219 Elm Street, recommended that the application be approved. Signed off by Three. Okay, so we have sufficient.
Motion received and adopted committee report with the restrictions that I think we put on the jacket, at least I hope I did.
Second.
Motion is to receive and adopt, and let me find the restrictions.
Did it put them on the jacket, Mr. President? Then let's see if I can find it in my notes.
I'm just looking. Uh, the only notes here, but this is from, uh, yeah, this definitely would be your notes, Counselor. It's from 2017, so, uh, do you have restrictions or?
Yeah, so, so we, we restricted it to, um, uh, time of the year, so it was March 1st and November 30th. And, and that, that was what the applicant requested, so it wasn't anything we imposed.
And that's the only restriction?
Um, yeah, let's see, other committee members have another recollection or another note somewhere, that's the only one I know of.
Okay, so motion is to grant the application with the one restriction, that it be from March 1st to November 30th, correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifteen C. The Committee on Ordinance was referred in order that resident-only parking be established at, on Eight Ivy Ave, or actually, Eight Ivy, Ivy Avenue, geez. Constituent request, give leave to withdraw.
Motion received and adopted committee report?
Second.
Motion is, uh, to receive, adopt the committee report to give leave to withdraw under discussion.
Mr. President, we, we had a pretty, pretty good discussion in committee. It, from hearing from the, uh, maker of the order and from the ward six counselor, i- it was recommended that, that due to the businesses on, on the corner, it would be pretty prohibitive. Plus, there seemed like there was adequate, there's, there seems, there's, there's several, um, handicap placards on the street, I believe it was three, Mr. President. And so the parking is limited as it is, and so based upon those, uh, facts, we, we, we suggest to give a leave to withdraw.
The motion, unless there's any further discussion? Motion is to give leave to withdraw, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifteen D. From the Committee on Ordinance was referred in order that the DPW superintendent review the possibility of resident-only parking on Pine Street, Appleton, and Essex, request of residents.
Um, motion to, uh, return this to the ordinance committee?
Motion is to refer it back to ordinance?
On the motion, I, I did confer with the, uh, two Pine Street residents at length, um, during the presence report, which, you know, I got most of the presence reports, so it was, it was excellent, Mr. President. And, and the, the, the ladies are, um, A, they, they were, uh, they're, 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 like I said, in committee, I said before, they're both well-spoken, they're on point, uh, but they, they want to add a little more to, to the debate. Uh, they are, they are very happy that there's a YMCA parking lot, Mr. President, um, and, and Kathy Vines, Vines, the, uh, the executive director of YMCA, has been nothing but cooperative with them, so they have room to park in the YMCA parking lot, uh, Mr. President. But, but we're, we're, uh, but they, they, they want to add some nuances to this and give us some more feedback. So again, they're really happy about having a YMCA parking lot, but we'll, we'll send it back to committee for, for the discussion if we could.
All right, so the motion is to refer back to committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifteen E. Committee on Ordinance was referred in order that resident parking signs be placed in front of 340 Hampton Street.
Uh, motion, uh, motion to refer back to committee, Mr. President?
Motion is to refer this one back to committee as well?
Thank you, yes.
All those in favor?
Well, you just gotta give me a second.
Counselor Lebron Martinez?
Well, I, she's second. No, just, just on that motion, uh, that was Counselor Gladys Lebron Martinez, uh, she was not able to attend, uh, last Tuesday's ordinance meeting, but I believe Counselor Bacon, the, the committee chair, takes these up on the fourth Tuesday of each month, Gladys. So if you could calendar that and then perhaps we could, we could get the appropriate feedback. She wasn't able to give us the feedback we needed, so, so we'll, we'll put it back to committee.
All right, Counselor?
Yeah, that'll be fine. Thank you.
All motions for back to committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sixteen. No finance? Slacker. Just kidding. Ouch. I'm gonna go back to my borrowed glasses.
The finance committee is now up to date after the new chair took over. The former chair left a nice folder for us.
Just wanted to get that extra work in there. All right, uh, no finance, no public safety, uh, public service.
Yeah, so, uh, we already did the first one, so let's go to eighteen B. Make a motion, take it off the table.
Motion is eighteen B. Is Committee on Public Service, there was referred, uh, review of Mayor Appoiny, uh, for council on aging, signed by everyone. Um, and it's, motion is to confirm. Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, so we had Ms. Glicka in our office, in City Hall, um, at our last meeting, and , uh, she got nominated, or appointed by, uh, Mayor Morris, and I think, uh, just like his other appointment tonight, I think it was a, a very excellent appointment. And, uh, we had a good meeting with her, and she has an extensive background. her, and she has an extensive background. Her background is at Mount Hoyok, and she was pretty much in charge of fundraising for the foundation with donors that were rated from two hundred fifty thousand to five hundred thousand. So she definitely would have a good rolodex for the council on aging, and hopefully she can hit the, she also has a big background in research as well, which is also another asset to have, and a background in relationship and relationship building. Very well spoken, she's already been working as a volunteer down at the council on aging, so having her on the board is probably a natural fit. She's also on the board of directors of Girls Incorporated, and she's also a member of the Hoyok Rotary. I, we had an excellent meeting, and I make a motion to have Mayor Morris's appointment confirmed.
Second. Anyone else? Counselor Lisi?
I just want to say, it was, she was a really strong candidate. Her resume spoke volumes to the asset that she's going to bring to the council on aging, both in terms of fund development and events planning, so I think we're lucky to have her.
Anyone else? All right, with that, the committee is to confirm the appointment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have it. Nineteen A, Committee on Development and Governmental Relations Committee. Committee was referred that the Honorable City Council, in accordance to Mass General Law thirty B and the Hoyok Precurrent Ordinance vote to accept the offer for the fifteen seventy-five North Hampton Street for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, recommended that be adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Bartley?
I should probably take a few of these up together, we'll just take them separately. A motion to receive and adopt the committee report and to accept the offer as written.
Motion is to receive and adopt and accept the offer under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, so thank you to the committee last night, as always, a great job. Excellent discussion, as Mrs. Florio pointed out, I'm grateful for her, her kind remarks earlier tonight, Mr. President. I think the committee really did due diligence on, on that, on this order. This is a, I mean, every, every person that was there last night really pitched in, so total team effort by all the committee members that should be thanked, and Mrs. Florio listed them already, so I won't do the, so again, Mr. President, this is, as you know, a, pretty much the center of, of the city of Hoyoke. It's a, it's an iconic building, it's been a, a building that's, that's schooled generations of public school students. So we had before us the, we estimated this was at least the fourth, but probably the fifth go-around on, on this, on this building to, to convey this out. I'm not going to belabor the history unless anybody wants to ask me questions. The purchase price is two hundred fifty thousand dollars, it was not the highest, it wasn't even the second highest, it wasn't the third, it was the fourth highest. So, so that being said, we received the names of the review committee, and, and I want to make sure that they're publicly thanked as well, so I wanted, so we listed their names last night, the seven members of the review committee that did due diligence and went ahead and reviewed this, reviewed the four proposals. We have before us Marcus Marrero and Johnny DiJack, who helped us kind of flesh out the reports of that committee. And so the bid that was deemed most advantageous is Colvest Incorporated of Springfield, there's a technical proposal that, that I think all of us received. The proposal calls for the following, Mr. President, as is known in his body and I hope known to the public, the building is pretty well asbestos-filled, so the demo and asbestos abatement is, the Colvest principal estimated to be one point five million dollars. So we, we heard, we heard that, we also know that his proposal going forward does not touch Anniversary Field. The proposal is for two buildings, one a three thousand foot, square foot building, which would be a bank, the other proposal is for eighteen thousand square feet, Mr. President, which is a series of smaller tenants. It was asked and answered last night, could that larger building be a pharmacy? And Mr. Marrero made it clear that it could not be a pharmacy, that was, that was specifically not allowed in the RFP, and it would be a restriction in the purchase and sale contract as well, Mr. President. The, the, there's, there's a, and I guess we should conclude this way. The John J. Lynch name is an iconic name in the city of Hoyoke, and it's an emotional name. When I first voted for this a few years ago, I had not toured that building, but having heard the words of my friend, Counselor Bresnahan, about Highland School, about, from Counselor Greeney, our good friend, my two tours, or two visits of Lynch School, Mr. President, this was a very hard vote for me. I did not attend John J. Lynch, but seeing that beautiful building and thinking that it would go away is, now that I've got this history behind me, when we first had this before us, and this has been for its body since at least two thousand ten, before I came on the board, but the first vote before us, well, we rejected that flat out, because that was, that was a money loser on a rental proposal to a social justice school. We, you know, those of us who are in the majority on that one, eviscerated that, that proposal by, by Room One. But there have been other proposals that I supported, at least one of them, and, and looking back on it, I probably shouldn't have supported it, and, but it, it never came before us for a zone change, so that went away. And here we are with another proposal, which I intend on supporting tonight, Mr. President, but it's, it was a really hard vote. I have to say that the applicant needs to come before us at least twice more, Mr. President, once for a zone change, and once also for a special permit for a drive-through for the bank. And so, and as I said last night, I like to give credit where credit's due, the name John J. Lynch has got to go on in history, as, as you, as you saw what happened, that heartfelt letter from the family of William J. Dean that was put before us, was brought to me by Counselor Tomlin, and Superintendent Zric and the mayor had been working hard to preserve that name. That name, John J. Lynch, cannot go away. So Marcos and I had a, I had a pre-meeting at my office last week sometime, and, and we talked it out, and we're hopeful that if this does go forward, and again, there's, there's many, many meetings, including Planning Board, which is, Joe, what is it?
Site plan review.
Site plan review. So planning, so there are, and we talked about lots of things last night, and I know I'm going on too long, but the, the thinking was that perhaps we could rename Anniversary Field Road to name it in, in honor of John J. Lynch. So change, change the street name to keep the name John J. Lynch right there. I know it's not the same, Mr. President. We also heard from counselors, Counselor Valentin asked a question about the facade, facade's got to go away. Other counselors asked a question about who's coming into the property, you know, no developer's going to say specifically who's going to come in, but, you know, counselors wanted to hear that, in case there was a, in case there was a hint or two. But, but there are no specific names that are, that are going to come in. We do know that it won't be an automotive parts store, and we do know that it won't be a pharmacy.
Pharmacy.
Pharmacy. Chain pharmacy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Counselor Valentin?
Thank you. Yeah, the reason I asked about the facade last night is because I, a group of folks from the city residents that are either currently with the Historic Commission or have been involved with the Historic Commission, you know, kind of came up with this idea of, you know, can we at least save the facade of the school, because it's beautiful? And so when I, when I spoke to the folks last night, I presented that to them and said, just, you know, just for the record, just to make sure there is no savable piece here, and he said, absolutely not. So it kind of opened the conversation to the whole piece on, on memorabilia, and so I'm really glad that I asked the question about the facade, because it then opened up the piece for folks that are listening at home, they might be interested in this, that they shared with us, and I made notes about it, because I wanted to make sure I remembered, they shared with us an experience that they did at the former St. Joseph's Church, which is on East Columbus Ave in Springfield. That church had been closed for ten years after a fire, had been exposed to the elements for six years, because it had a huge hole, and because of the emotional value that the structure had for many people, they decided to incorporate architectural components of that former building into the new site. And so they said they would definitely be open to that, if that's possible for this site. And then they also chose to donate artifacts from the church to nonprofit groups, so that the artifacts would actually remain within the community, and they talked about this really cool thing they did, which they called it a memento walk-through, where people from the community literally would just walk through the church, grab things that they thought they would want to remember, and they said they would be more than willing to do that for Lynch School. So I thought that could be a nice compromise in the sense of folks being able to remember and value, you know, the, the memory of Lynch for them. So just as a reminder, you know, we, we've been here before, I think we heard last night, this is like the fourth cycle of proposals since two thousand and nine, which actually is even before this current administration. We've heard clearly from Massachusetts School Building Authority that remodeling Lynch is not feasible, so folks need to understand this will not be a school again, and so I just think it's time to get this back on the tax rolls. I'm in full support of this project, and I think that Colvest Group has presented a great proposal, and I am in full support of that, and I ask my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, just briefly, it was a great meeting, run by our, our good chairman, Mr. Bartley, and I'm glad you also brought that up about the, the emotional sentimental values of the school and how that can be utilized, and he was very, very much open to that. You know, this has been going on for a lot of years, probably nine, ten years, and it's something that we have to move forward with. I, I like the ideas of possibly that emotional feel for it, for people to try to get something out of that school, and I think they're very open to that. I went to that school for two years, I played ball up in Anniversary Field since I was nine or ten years old, and it's a great field up there, and, and they stated that they're going to really work with that back area that, so that the field is, you know, really good with the, with the fit of the, the building. It's something that I, I think a lot of our constituents want to see something done with that area, and for this company to come in and take that building down and the cost that they're spending, even though we're only getting two hundred fifty thousand for that property, the amount of money that they're spending to invest, to take the school and, and to, and to encapsulate all the hazardous materials with it, is really a bonus for the city, and it's, I think Counselor Bartley, Bartley brought down the timeframe, and it's, you know, it's, it's a year or two down the road, everything has its steps, but it's something that I think is, is good for the city and, and for that neighborhood, for that area, and they're going to come in and site plan review, the traffic, everything is going to be done, and it's going to be definitely a win for the city, and I'm very much in support of, of this project and, and what it's going to do for our community.
Counselor McGivern?
Just to add a couple of thoughts to some very good thoughts that have been expressed, the, the price, what we're acting on this evening is the price, and the price is more than fair. The two hundred fifty thousand dollars doesn't sound like a lot, but the demolition costs are estimated at one point three to one point five. An incredible amount of asbestos, incredible amount of black mold has to be removed from that building, and these developers understand, you know, the importance of, of doing that job correct, and the importance of the actual development class themselves. Once this baby step is taken, not only down the road, site plan review, but there's a good chance, depending what is going to, going to be needed, that some type of zone change will take place also, so it won't be the only bite at the apple that we'll have, we'll be able to work with them as they go forward. They were probably one of the more compassionate developers I've seen come before the city. They had answers for, you know, sincere answers for all questions, and I think they're, they're willing to work with everybody on making the right project and making the, not only a good economic development project for the city, but a good development project for all those who have memories of Lynch. And I did tell them, I have memories of other buildings that we lost. Thanks to Mike Sullivan, I have a brick from the old Bud. I drove by, got a brick from the Rainbow Club on Pine and Delight Street, and I missed the Essex House for the old swizzle stick, but there might be a couple hanging around.
Anyone else? Counselor President?
The, Mr. O'Neill was the principal at Lynch School when I went there for seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, and every time he got, he'd start off the morning, he'd go "Pffft!" To, to announce, to announce the day, so I do that in memory of Mr. O'Neill, God rest his soul.
You sounded like Joe. Joe does that on the mic.
Mr. Izard, God rest his soul.
Joe does that on the mic.
I had, I, I mean, I went to that school, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, I was the second-to-last class before they changed it, just the seventh and eighth.
How much time do you spend in the principal's office?
They used to have, they had an in-house, they had an in-house, it was Chester Dudley was the vice principal, and Jim Barrett, they were, they were the muscle of that school, I'll tell you that. Back in those days, there would be full-blown fights with teachers and students, it was absolutely crazy. It's, it's even hard to believe that, I, I witnessed it and participated with it, it was crazy, but it was a great school, and I, I'm reluctantly voting for this, obviously, because we need the development, but I'd love to see Jimmy Curran get that facade down, like he's done with many facades throughout the city of Hoyoke, throw it down at the warehouse. Right above, right above that facade was the music room with Mr. Izard, he was dating his wife, who was a Latin teacher, years and years and years ago, and they ended up getting married. I used to pass notes, she was at one end of the hallway, and she'd give me a note in Latin class, and I'd run down to music class and give him a note, he'd write something back. It was, it was just, it was, it was amazing, and back in those days, the teacher's lounge was right next to the cafeteria, and the only thing coming out of the teacher's lounge was smoke, because they're, everyone, they're smoking cigarettes after they got out of class like fiends, but, you know, Mrs. Snizer, I mean, I could just go on and on, I was, it was an absolute great school, it was, it was a great time, it was really one of the first times, or not the first time, but when Latinos and white folks really started dumb, you know, before that, I would, we went to, I went to Kelly School and got very close with a lot of Latinos in the community when they, you know, and we all went to Lynch together, it was just, it was a great time back then, you know?
Good history of your life.
That sounds like the memories of someone who spent several years at the middle school.
Ten years is not a long time, Joe.
Seven years of his life.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I, I think in light of our early role, I really want to echo what Counselor President had to say, because though I went to Catholic school through eighth grade, I did go on a Hoyok High, you know, shepherded through there by Mr. Shavelin, who's now passed away, I know we had a moment of silence for him a month or so ago, and, and, you know, Mr. Sears as well, who both took a great care of me. But I played a lot of ball, both at Anniversary Field and in, in the Lynch School gym, a lot of basketball, and that's where I, that's where I made my friends that were black, white, Hispanic, et cetera, et cetera, and right at, at John J. Lynch and Anniversary Field and playing ball in Hoyoke all these years. So I think there's something said that, said for that, so I want to repeat that. I like Counselor President's idea about contacting Jimmy Curran, that's why it's important to emphasize that they will have to come back before us twice, they're going to try to do it pretty quickly. This is not going to be a drawn-out process on the city council, Mr. President. It will be a drawn-out process overall, but the licensing and the permitting is probably, if it goes according to their wishes, it would be over by early fall, Mr. President, and, and then they'd be on to, they'd be on to demo, well, remediation, then demo, site preparation, and then development. So you're, you're looking at possibly having shovel in the ground next spring. So that's the, that's the thinking on their end, Mr. President.
Yep, one thing to point out from, meaning you guys kind of touched on it, but I think it's something that should be done, is they said they'd provide bricks, they would put information on the brick, and in a sense, Lynch School and all the information about it, they're being more than willing to, to help in order to save the history. So I think it's our job to get a hold of Curran, to connect the two parties in order to, to save that history, however we want to do it, because they were more than willing to be, be able to do that for us. So they're open, I think it's our job to make sure we, we tailor it to their. Counselor Lisi?
Yeah, just the one thing that I was going to mention, it would be nice if we could, if we were going to name Anniversary Field, or have the, the John J. Lynch name on the road going up to Anniversary Field, it'd be nice to have the, the, what do I want to say, the, the large part of the building that has the name, in the same way at Kennedy Park, it has the, the name of the building that was there right on the park field, it's, it's a really nice way to commemorate the, the site.
And I think they'd be more than, more than happy to accommodate for that. It's just, I think we have to kind of tell them, as, as they reference the church, people told them, I want the shield, I want this, they, they were told what to do, and they, they incorporated. I think they want the guidance, so let's not forget about offering that to them, because they, they will be accommodating. Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, just to stay with Counselor McGivens, McGivern's history lessons, when I attended Lynch, and I'm being the oldest one in the room here, the principal's name was Patton, and Mr. O'Neill was the head of guidance, and I was sent to the principal's office because I referred to him as Honker, and he was standing right behind me.
I think we found out who's going to do the memento tour.
Yeah.
Everybody that went to Lynch that's here.
Oh, boy. So with that, the, if there's no other discussion, the recommendation is to receive and adopt the request to, for two fifty for the parcel.
Second.
So clerk will call the roll, because we're actually doing the sale of land, so clerk will call, if you're voting yes, you're voting for it, if not, you're voting against.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Put your vote, you approve the transfer.
Mr. President, can we take nineteen B, nineteen F, and nineteen G as a package? Suspend the rules, please?
B, F, and G?
Correct, sir. I need to abbreviate a reading, too, it's probably fine.
Motion is suspend the rules, take up B, F, and G as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? B is... B is a communication from the mayor dated 2/2/2018, which is the proposal for the Lynch School, which we just approved. And then F is a communication from Purchasing Department with regards to Lynch School. And G is a communication from OPED, information on the sale process of Lynch School.
Motion, receive.
Motion is to receive all these, receive and adopt, or just receive?
Let's receive, Mr. President.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, can we take 19C and 19D as a package, please?
Motion is suspend the rules, take up 19C and D as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 19C, the committee on DGNR, whom was referred, in order that the City Council receive a communication from the Legal Department regarding receivership program. And 19D is also regarding the receivership program. Motion for all these is that they have been complied with with that, Counselor?
Motion, receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion is receive and adopt the committee report. Any communication or any, Counselor?
Oh, sure. The Law Department gave a really, put together a really nice, two really nice packages at yours truly's recommendation and order. And then they're gonna come back to this committee every six months, Mr. President. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be really helpful to the committee and to the public, we hope, to get the feedback on really the proposal that you helped spearhead, Kevin, myself, Danny, a couple other counselors, really helped spearhead to get the receivership program up and running in the city. And, you know, we need to get this out in the public. And so, and so, and I think this is also helpful for the Law Department to put together a summary. They now are gonna be on a timetable to come to committee in October and April, henceforth. I don't think, you know, they'll just send a communication, so we're not gonna have to have another, you know, endless orders to do this. So it was, it was, it was great to hear. I hope you can get, at least this one, the Republican Housing Court update, April 26th, emailed, because the black and white photos, while nice, they don't do it justice. The color photos that are emailed really, really, really help out. So with that, I'll say thanks to the Law Department. Crystal did a great job presenting as well. And that's that. Thank you.
I'd also like to thank Niles Corchane and Toby Wilson, who also helped with that program and coming in and guiding us with regards that Attorney Corchane slash school committee member, just a wealth of information and a great resource. Counsel Tomlin and Counsel?
Yeah, just briefly, it was a great meeting, and I thank Crystal tonight for the briefing on that and the photos. These buildings that were actually, you know, sometimes for years, nothing done with in different, all areas of the city. And having people coming in and taking these buildings over, fixing them up, some of them, selling them, some of them having, actually, one person down Northeast Street is very happy to have a home now. And it's really a plus for the city, and I'm looking, I'm going for, you know, reports down the road of buildings and the auctions that city can do to take city properties and get them back on the tax rolls, because it not only cleans up a blighted area, but it gives somebody a place to live, and it gives the city tax dollars. So it's a very, very good program, and I really appreciate all my colleagues that put this together and really keep their eye on this and to keep this program going.
Thank you. Crystal's presentation was very helpful, but also it opened up the conversation to the list of the auction properties, because all we hear is, you know, there's a list for the auction, so-and-so sold, and then that's about it, unless you follow up kind of specifically with the property. So I did ask her about that last night, knowing that it falls on the Treasurer's Office. And so I'm gonna be filing an order for our next meeting. I didn't want to submit it as a late file, because it wasn't an emergency. And so anyone who wants to sign on to that, it'll be for next week, and it'll be asking the Treasurer's Office to come in and give us an update on the properties that have been auctioned, perhaps in the last two auctions, and what the status is. Because what we're finding is that folks will come in, do the purchase, and then kind of sit on the next step, which is pretty much submitting a rehab plan, so that we know what to expect in terms of timeframe. And, that's okay, in terms of timeframe and expectation. And I gave the example of 229 Beach, which is pretty much Beach and Cabot. And it's right across the street from that parcel that we sold to One Hoyok. They built a beautiful two-family home. And then 229 is this eyesore that was purchased at the last auction, and nothing has happened with it. So I'll be filing that order, because I think it's important to have the conversation, because a lot of these homes end up being on the problem property group. And so it becomes this vicious cycle that, especially as ward counselors, we need to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So motion is that the two orders have been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 19E. Committee on Department of Government Relations, whom was referred, February 27, 2018, a communication from the Law Department regarding Counsel Bacon's request for a legal opinion on whether a permit for a project being extended beyond the initial approval by the board.
Motion, receive.
Motion is to receive. Under discussion?
Yeah, I think it's cleared out there, laid out there, I'm sorry, Mr. President. And just a point of personal privilege, I forgot to mention at the last order, Mr. President, there is a subcommittee to the problem property group that has really been, really been helpful in getting some of this receivership. You know, it's the code enforcement. I would also point out that, and it's not surprising, one of those provides us last night, that those properties are auctioned off. It's, as I said last night, it's just fly, little bird, fly. I mean, we don't, there's no oversight. Whereas the receivership, and again, thank you for mentioning Toby and Niles, because they were really instrumental in, you guys understand this, that has a force of law. And that has a, it's an ongoing court case where you have to go before a Western Division, you know, Housing Court Judge, who has been seeing these cases for years in Springfield and other cities. So, you know, it gets real. As you know, when you walk in front of a judge, it starts to get kind of real, as opposed to just drop out a check to the Treasurer and saying, oh, thank you, and not doing anything for ever. So, thank you, Mr. President, for that. Sorry about that. Yeah, so thank you to the, Crystal listed all their names, Captain Cavanac, and then Damian, and then Sean, Goncalves Solz. Oh, wow. I can't read my, I have no chance to read my writing. So there's a few others as well. I can't read my writing, Crystal. Sorry. But there are definitely seven others. There's a total of seven in the group. So everybody's pitching in in City Hall, and it really, it really helps. Thank you, Mr. President.
With regards to 19E?
Yeah, so we had, we had a communication from the Law Department dated February 27th, that kind of, I hope we all received. It pretty much laid out the current state of the law, and we reviewed that last night. The committee felt it was complied with.
Counsel, make your own set. Your own set, thanks.
So motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Did FG, H, 19H, Committee on Development and Government Relations, whom was referred, in order that OPED with the council discuss compliance of various pilots, so on and so forth. Motion is that the order be complied with as amended.
Yes. So that's my motion, Mr. President, that we amended this in committee last night. And that we, I'm not sure what procedurally we need to do here. We amended it in committee, and I'll go over that amendment. So my motion here is to receive and adopt the committee report as amended.
Second.
So the order that OPED meet with the council to discuss, A, compliance with various pilots, B, status of Hartwool Wind Development Project amended in DGNR, OPED direction to provide updates, if I'm reading that correct, to DGNR on pilots, TIFs, et cetera, so long as?
New information becomes available.
New information becomes available.
Yeah. So, and so this is an order Mike Sullivan filed, and just similar to the one I, we discussed earlier, it's pilots and TIFs, and we know, we know these acronyms, but we don't really get much feedback. So now, OPED, similar to what the Law Department's gonna be, on a six-month review, OPED will be on a six-month review to come in and to provide updates to City Council via a communication. So we don't need to file endless orders to that effect either. They'll just come in every April and October, and we'll hear the latest on compliance, especially with pilots and TIFs. One, close to my heart, is the one that we approved in DGR, has not been complied with by the applicant, but the Building Commissioner is now coming down on them kind of hard. And we're hopeful that that'll move forward. But there are numerous other ones that Counsel Sullivan discussed, and we, you know, we kind of put Marcos in the spot last night. But Marcos, come October, will be fully prepared, and we'll have updates on what was, what we approved, and then how far the applicant, how much the applicants complied with it. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, one of the ones that Counsel Bartley referred to is the Mount Tom Solar Project. They were supposed to have, part of their agreement was to have planted 150 or 175 trees. And nothing at all has been planted at all. It's just one big glaring eyesore as you drive by, and now there begun another project there. So kudos to Damian Cody. He's informed, they said they'd try and plant the trees next fall. There's no reason they didn't do it when we first approved the pilot for him. And I guess he's not gonna allow them to, whatever, put their second project online until they comply with the first one. The other one, the Hartwool Building, Hartwool Building, was of special concern to us, because it's been going on for so long, and it involves putting together so many grants and very similar timeframe to what took Hoyok Catholic probably 10 years to accomplish. That the building isn't deteriorating. I mean, that one could fall right into the canal if it just languishes and isn't taken care of throughout this whole process. And the last one was the Aegis Project. They were supposed to have done something with sections of the former Parsons. Nothing has been done there. And I was very pleased to learn from Marcos that until they do, they are not getting the tax benefit that was awarded. They are paying the full taxes in the meantime. So that was, that was good information.
With that, the motion is that the order has been complied with as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Charter and rules. Joint Committee, nothing, so we're on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Mr. President, can we take 22 and 24 as a package with abbreviated reading and send them to DGR, please?
Motion is suspend the rules, take up 22 and 24 from Counsel Bartley. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abbreviated reading, 22, in accordance to Master of Law 30B, the Hoyok Code of Ordinances procurement, the City Council is a player of the property known as Springdale Turn Hall as surplus property. 24, declare surplus property of 277 Main Street. Send those both to DGNR. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 23 from Counsel Bartley, City Council, receive an update from the mayor on the status of repairs of the Prue and Topia parking garage, as well as the public parking meters.
Yeah, Mr. President, I like to receive and refer this to Joe. Can I present the finance?
If I could.
Yes.
That'd be no problem. We do have an order in the ordinance committee that's essentially asking the DPW to look at taking over the parking and eliminating the management company and to revise all of the structures that we have. I know David and I, you know, both working downtown, understand that there is a horrible dilemma. We had a speaker here earlier this evening that pointed out the dilemma, that there are, you know, there's free parking over here, in the essence that the meters aren't, not the meters, but the entrance to both parking decks cannot accept daily parking. If we close daily parking, there is no more daily parking downtown, because the meters are two hours limited. The daily parking on the decks are unlimited in the course of a day, but you pay as you go. And this has been going on for several months. Not only are we losing money, but we're not providing the service that we need for people who come down and work, you know, don't work five days a week in Hoyok, but work here two or three days. A lot of attorneys that come from out town that use the courthouses, people that are going to visit, you know, Counsel Bartley's office, or going to shop or do things like that, and want to make a half a day of it and eat lunch down here. They need this type of parking. And it's not there simply because the machines have been vandalized, but they have not been replaced. So we need a plan. Sorry, David, that's just kind of a long answer to a simple question.
No, actually, good answer, Joe. So there's a good answer.
Motion is to receive, refer to ordinance, copy to the mayor.
No, just receive and refer to ordinance. And we'll go after it at that point. But we should, yeah, we should probably copy it, Mr., you're right, Mr. President, to the mayor and to DPW. And Mike's been great about coming in. But we've got to get some feedback from the mayor on this. So it's just been going on too long. I mean, Mr. President, we passed the ordinance about updating the parking rates. Where is that now? Well, I'll tell you where. Nowhere. It hasn't changed. So when we had, who was it? Was McManus here at the rail when Kevin was president? Oh, these are our estimates based upon all this, all this money. It hasn't happened, Mr. President. I mean, I know counselors get mad at me for pointing out the mayor, and I apologize. But gee whiz, he's the executive, and once in a while, he's got to step up and come back and not just have rhetoric. We got a lot of rhetoric. And he, the mayor, said it right there, sitting at that desk during last year's budget time, right at that desk. This is what we're gonna get for revenue. Not a nickel, Mr. President, because he hasn't changed the rates, hasn't done anything about the meters, about the parking decks. You can park for free. And you go and see ClickFlix website, how many people are getting, you know, they're getting aggravated on there. I mean, not just vandalism, but free parking. And they're saying, why am I paying $80 a month, or whatever it is, for parking, where people just, when the gate's up 24/7? That's room one, Mr. President. And he's counting his budget on that income. That income hasn't materialized, because we've gotten nothing but rhetoric. Now, I'm sorry to offend counselors for picking on the mayor. I apologize from the bottom of my heart, because certain counselors won't do it. But you've got it, you know, I give him credit where credit's due. He's done some great things. That is not one of them. Thank you.
All right. So the motion is to receive, send to ordinance, copy to mayor and DPW. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
25 and 26 as a package?
25 and 26 as a package, suspend the rules. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 25 from Counsel Leahy and McGee, order that the DPW replace the guardrail at Cleveland Street. And Counsel Leahy and McGee, order that the DPW repave Lexington Road?
Lennox.
Sorry, Lennox Road. So make a motion to receive, adopt, and send to DPW. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 27 from Counsel Leahy, that the Superintendent of Department of Public Works and the Board of Public Works and the mayor's office communicate with Mast Dot and Hamden Sheriff's Office to advise when a cleanup will begin and be completed on the ramps, off ramps and medians of 91-391. Please respond to the City Council within 10 business days.
Receive and send to those appropriate departments.
So motion is to receive and adopt and send to all the departments listed.
Mr. President?
Counsel Bartley?
Can I just, through the chair, Jim, have we had any feedback on your order that you filed, I think it was two years ago, when they're, to update us on construction projects, to give us a heads up? So?
The gas electric one?
Any construction project? So this is almost similar to that order, to give us a heads up when there's?
Yeah, so.
Because I know I don't get them.
So, if I could, one of the orders that I filed, in fact, I spoke about it the other night, was when people come home and there's spray paint, you know, whether it's red or blue or what have you, in front of their house, some constituents were asking me, you know, exactly, what is this? And so I filed an order to have any time that DigSafe pulls a permit. a permit that is going to be uploaded into the Gas and Electric's website. Well, Gas and Electric has a very nice website with a lot of information on it. Uh, that took a person, actually, about forty hours to do and I felt bad for that person. How, however, having said that, now that it is, it's, it's very streamlined now, so it goes straight into, uh, the website and the, the workers and the people at the Gas and Electric actually use this as a tool now. So that's working. But as for the, um, order I think you're talking about for the DPW, I don't think we've gotten any response from that.
Right. So this, this is kind of similar to, Mr. President, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, yeah. So it's, I, I think it's fairly straightforward. Just, you know, kind of let us know what's happening.
Yeah.
That's, that's all. Um, thank you, Mr. President.
So motion was
Feel free to sign on with it. Sign me on.
Add Counsel Bartley.
Thank you, Jim.
Motion is to receive, adopt and send to all the, uh, mentioned names.
Yes, sir.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item twenty-eight from Leahy McGee, Sullivan Valentin.
Yeah, anybody that wants to be on?
Anybody, I'll get me on.
Make a motion to receive and send to, uh,
Counsel Tomlin.
Mrs. Allen. If, uh, we can set that up for our next meeting, Ryan, do you think? Thank you.
I'll just add everyone, everyone up there?
Everyone, yes, sir.
Everyone. So add everyone. Order that the city council give Chief Nice Ringer a proclamation on the announcement of his retirement, which once again is July twentieth. Um, he has served the city with honor, the Hoyou Police Chief for the last eight years. So motion is to receive and adopt. And when did you want to have him in or when?
Maybe next meeting. I'll touch base with Ryan off, offline.
Okay.
And the chief, of course.
All right. So i- if they confirm the date for next meeting, at least let everyone know so that way.
Thank you.
So all, Counsel Sullivan, sorry.
After this.
Oh, alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel Sullivan, you had a question?
Yeah, um, if we could go back to twenty-five for just a minute, I'd like to suggest a friendly amendment.
Motion is to reconsider our actions on item twenty-five. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-five was the Department of Public Works replace the guardrail. And what's the issue?
Yeah, we'll be replacing that guardrail again and again and again if we don't do something about removing the dead trees. That's, it's not from cars crashing into it, it's from trees falling down on it. It's also a danger. We, we've got a lot of traffic going down to, uh, High Rock there and down to the park, uh, people walking dogs and everything. Um, I'd, I'd suggest that, um, that the DPW replace the guardrail on Cleveland Street and the city forester remove the dead and diseased trees, uh, in the vicinity.
So the motion is to add that the DPW replace the guardrail as well as remove all the dead trees behind the guardrail in order to make sure it doesn't happen again. So on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So now it's to receive, adopt.
If I could, one of the things that was, I found interesting, Michael, was, um, when we did have the forester up there maybe about a year ago or so, um, they were actually, a couple of people that were walking their dogs told me this, they were actually cutting down different branches and letting him drop right onto the guardrail. So a lot of that damage occurred from the, whatever company it was, was just cutting him and just letting him drop. All right, thank you.
So motion now is to receive, adopt as amended. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item twenty-nine, Counsel LaBour Martinez, that the DPW repair the pothole in the crossing guard in front of Kelly School. Uh, motion is to receive, adopt, send to DPW.
Can, can we, um, give it a leave to withdraw? They took care of it. I, I filed the order and I have sent it anyways just to make sure it got faster.
Sure you want to, you know, I'm kidding. So motion is to give this leave to withdraw because it was complied with.
Thank you, yeah.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty, Counsel LaBour Martinez, that the handicap sign be placed at sixteen East Court. Motion is to receive, refer to ordinance with a copy.
And, yeah, Disability Commission.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-one, what's the McGee side of the ledger here? All right. So order that the ordinance committee invite, uh, Paul Dunnehugh, the project manager from Suez into ordinance to discuss the CSO as well as the rate. Also refer to ordinance. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-two, uh, from Counsel McGee, that the forestry department and DPW either remove the tree in front of
Counsel, can we take thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four and thirty-five as a package?
Sure.
Is it like they're going to the same place?
Take up thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four and five. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-two is to remove or the tree or the roots damaging the sidewalk at eleven Princeton Street. Thirty-three is DPW and Suez, uh, repair the berm at one, and that should be berm, not berm. So that's an E in there. Uh, one forty-one near Woodmar Glen. Uh, thirty-four, DPW and Park and Rec report back to public safety on the status of the parks. Um, just for information on that, we approved as a board to have Park and Rec give us an update on all the parks and the needs that they have. They received it in their minutes of the meetings and then never complied with it. So when you're reviewing those minutes of the meetings, look for that stuff. Uh, finally, thirty-five, that the DPW and Alarm Division report back to public safety with regards to the traffic lights. That is now my tenth filing of the traffic lights in the city of Hoyou. I guarantee we will get those done. So with that, um, thirty-four and thirty-five would go to public safety. Uh, thirty-three would go receive and adopt and then thirty-two would be DPW receive.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine and forty as a package, refer to Committee on Finance.
Motion is to suspend rules, take thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine and forty. Counsel McGivern?
Just, uh, real quick, the Finance Committee will meet on the seventh. All the financial transfers and a couple of grants will be taken up on that evening. On the fourteenth, we're going to meet and try to get the assessors in for an order to discuss how they assess property along with a follow-up on a recycling order to establish a fund to get those, uh, big bins going and a couple other things to clean up the jacket. I also will be sending out a message to the mayor and auditor that they will hopefully share with all department heads that any financial transfer should be in for our first meeting, any request for financial transfers should be in for our first meeting in June so we can act on them in our final meeting on June, which is the last time we'll have a chance to adjust this year's budget.
So motion is to receive these, take them up as a package. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-six was nineteen thousand six hundred from Pay Reserve Officer to Education, Training and Equipment. Thirty-seven was twenty thousand dollars from Reserve Officer Snow Toe for repair of motor vehicle. Thirty-eight was ten thousand from free cash for motor vehicles. Thirty-nine was seventy-five thousand from free cash for outside counsel and forty is seventy-nine thousand from free cash for software license and software hardware. All off to Finance. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President?
Forty-one?
Yep. Just through the chair, Joe, can, can we get an update on free cash, uh, for the next, uh, city council meeting, please?
Will do.
Thank you.
So with that, forty-one, uh, order from Counsel Valentin, order that the handicap sign be placed at thirty-two Clinton Ave.
Uh, send to ordinance with copy to Commission Disabilities.
Motion to send to ordinance, copy to disabilities. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Dare I ask? There are. All right, late file A.
How many?
Late file A.
I'm sure there are emergencies, Danny.
From Counsel Leahy, order that the city of Hoyou talk with National Law Firm of Scott and Scott in regards to class action lawsuits against pharmaceutical companies to recoup costs for opioid crisis. Sent to?
The mayor and the law department?
Motion is to receive and send to the mayor. Do you want to do it to committee, though? The follow-up? So motion is to receive, refer to public safety with copy to mayor and the law department.
Sure, thank you.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? B, late file B is from the mayor regarding an appointment of Mr. Rivera of twelve ninety-five Dwight Street for Commissioner of Park and Rec.
Public Service.
Send to Public Service. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? C is also from the mayor regarding an appointment for the disabilities, uh, Commission on Disabilities.
Public Service.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Another appointment.
Public Service.
This is for
DGNR?
Library, uh, Library Board Directors. Alls, uh, Public Service. Alls in favor?
All opposed? Next order, Clerk's Office. Is this hard? I guess it is.
And finally, E is local option excise and retail marijuana sales.
If I, if I may, that's what everybody
Communication.
Got on their desk. It's actually, um, I filed this order.
Division of Local Services. It's a bulletin and Counsel Lisi.
Yeah, so the order should say that, um, the city of Hoyou accept Mass General Law sixty-four and section three to impose the excise tax on resale, retail sales of marijuana for adult yields at the rate of three percent. Um, so this is the, this is the rate that we can adopt through the Mass General Law and if we want to have it in place for July first of this year, for the next fiscal year, we need to take act, final action by May thirty-first. Um, so I thought that we should get this going sooner rather than later.
So to ordinance?
To ordinance, I don't, I don't think that we
If I may.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. So the first issue is we have to add language. So what I'm going to do is make a motion to suspend the rules to take up final action because we're adding language and actually now talking about it. So motion is to suspend the rules, take up final action. Alls in favor? Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
This?
Yeah, we threw that out. So Counsel Vacant, Counsel Vacant.
Thank you, Mr. President. This order, along with another order similarly filed, has been taken up in ordinance and the ordinance committee referred it to legal to come back to us with implementation procedures for the tax. Thank you.
Those are all different orders. This one is strictly for the excise tax on recreational retail sales and the specific language was given to us from DLS, which is what you have in front of you.
That's, and that was part of the discussion that we had on the broad order that had been filed around implementing the taxes.
So I don't think we need a public hearing.
Was this part of that?
I think it's really just an adoption of the Mass General Law.
Well, we'll send to ordinance because there's already two there and this is an order now that the city accept the state law for the excise tax.
Yeah. Did it come with the language that I filed?
All I have is the bulletin.
So there should have been language. I'm sure you, you'll, I'm sure the Clerk's Office will take care of it, but it just says that the city of Hoyou accept Mass General Law, um, C sixty-four and section three.
Okay. Motion would be to send to ordinance?
Yep.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Nothing else? Motion is
There should be an F, I'm sorry. There should be an F. I don't know what happened. So the F should also say, um, that we provide a proclamation for Olivia Mazel for her decades of service at the May fifteenth meeting because there's going to be a reception in City Hall at six PM to honor her service.
Do you, do we have?
She retired from the Historic Commission.
Counsel Lisi, do you have one of the forms that we can write?
I'll, I'll fill it out, sure.
All right. So the motion is to suspend the rules to take up final action on late file F, which would be to give a proclamation to Ms. Mazul for her years of service. Alls in favor? All opposed? Everyone to sign on unless there's, no? All right, everyone to sign on. Motion is to adjourn. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.